Recording in progress. All right, well, good evening, everyone. Sorry for taking a couple of extra minutes there. I just wanted to make sure folks could have time to get in the virtual room with us before we actually started with the presentation and conversation tonight. So my name's Jennifer Dixon and I work in Eagles Environmental Support Division. And tonight, we're going to be talking about a draft enforcement action against FCA US LLC, otherwise known as Stellantis. So we'll try to stick with Stellantis tonight, but you might hear us saying FCA a couple of times as well. So I was actually having a little bit of computer difficulties tonight, so I'm going to have Erin advancing the slides for me. So Erin, if you don't mind going to the next one, that would be appreciated. All right, so just a few little logistics things before we get started with the details. Your lines are going to be muted during the meeting. So what, how that's going to work is when we get to the part of the evening where we're doing question and answer, or subsequently, when we get to the comment period, we will just be unmuting your lines for you when you raise your hand, or you somehow otherwise indicate you would like to ask a question or make a comment. And I'll go over how you do that in just a couple of minutes. Also, we will be recording this meeting, so if you have to skip off early, or you know someone who's missing the actual meeting tonight and is interested, we will be sharing that link. It's on our YouTube channel. And we do get those transcribed, so if you know someone who has English as a second language, they can view those, at least in writing, in their native language for the most part. So it's kind of wanted to put that out there. So next slide, Erin. All right, so I always want to go over how things are going to run, because we are going to have two portions of the evening, and one is going to be more of a back and forth with like a Q and A section. And then we're going to do to the comment period at the end. So the first part of the night, we're going to give a little bit of a presentation. I'll go over what that's going to be about in a couple of minutes. And then, once we get past that, we'll open it up for question and answer. There's a couple of ways that you can ask questions, either verbally or typed. And then, once we get past the question to answer part, so it's going to be at seven o'clock, or whenever you guys are done asking questions, whichever comes first. So we try to stick to that seven o'clock kind of start time for the actual hearing. So during the hearing portion, just as a reminder, and you'll hear me say this another time again tonight as well, the hearing portion is for you to give us comments on the record. So during that time, the decision maker will be listening in, I'll be listening in, we'll be taking down, you know, notes and obviously recording your comments, but we won't be responding to any questions that you might pose during that time. So next slide, Erin. All right, so getting to how to ask a question, and I'll go over this again later too, just to remind you. So you can use the question and answer box at the bottom of your screen, not the chat box. So use the Q and A box. And you can type your questions in there. Sometimes people like to do that as we're going along. A question comes to mind, and you know, maybe we get to it, maybe we don't, but you know, hearing something twice is better than not hearing it at all. So I'd love to get the questions in as we're going. Otherwise, it'll be sort of at the end of Erin's presentation. You can also click that raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. So that's going to virtually raise your hand for me, so that I can see that you want to ask a question when we get to the question and answer part, or if you want to make a comment at the end. If we do have folks calling in, I'm just going to check that really quickly. Doesn't look like we do right now, but I'll remind folks later, if we have people calling in on the telephone, they will just press pound two to raise their hand. So we'll be able to see them raising their hand as well. Next slide, please, Erin. Okay, so I'm going to really quickly introduce you to the Air Quality Division staff and the other support staff that we have on tonight. And then I'm going to have our Division Director, Mary Ann Dolehanti, kind of open up the evening with some opening remarks that are probably more interesting than what I'm saying right now. So first thing is, is if everybody could turn their cameras on just for a minute here. And then Erin, if you want to just leave yours on, and Mary Ann too. So we're going to mostly be hearing from Erin Moran. She is the enforcement person for this case. And she's going to be talking to you guys about the proposed enforcement action, a little bit about the process, you know, how did we get here? That's important to to understand. Bob Burns is the inspector for this facility, so he'll be online to answer questions as well. And like I said, Mary Ann Dolehanti is our decision maker, so she'll be listening in for the night, but not necessarily participating in the question and answer. Her role is to make a decision on the proposed action at the end of the comment period. And then I also have Jim Ostrowski on with me, and he is going to be just helping me with some background Zoom kind of things. So if you want to, hi Jim, yep, he is actually there. So there you guys go. Can meet him for a second. So Mary Ann, before we kind of go through this agenda, I know you had some opening remarks that you wanted to give. So if you want to just unmute yourself, you can do that anytime.
Sure, thanks, Jen. So as Jen said, I am Mary Ann Dolehanti. I'm the Director for the Air Quality Division. So I do really appreciate you all being here this evening to talk through this pending enforcement action. You know, from an air quality perspective, we are aware there's a lot going on with this facility with Stellantis, including the enforcement action we're going to talk about tonight, and many other things outside the enforcement action. You know, we're aware of the continued concerns about this company's compliance with the air rules, how those, how this enforcement action is going to help. We know about the, and I think we've talked before, but about the status of the health consult with the State Health Agency, THHS. It's one of the other items that's been going on or is active. There's been additional sampling that's been done around the MAC facility. I know you're anxious to hear some about that, why it was delayed, what happened, what are the results? There are things like noncompliance at some of the Stellantis other facilities like Oran Truck. So all of these are connected in some way, and they're very important conversations. And you know, just letting you know that they're each being addressed by us, by Air Quality Division. And while we're going to do our best to answer all the questions that you have this evening, the focus of tonight's hearing and Q and A is really on this enforcement action at MAC. And you'll hear a little more about it as Erin walks through, but the enforcement action is to resolve some past odor complaints or odor violations, and to authorize the installation of this second RTO. And I, and the odor management plan. So in the future, you know, there will be additional opportunities for y'all to talk with us. We'll be making those opportunities available. We share information on our website. And when we do that, we try to send out a note to staff or to folks that participated in the past to let you know that there's new information. Excuse me. New information available so that you can refer to that. There'll also be another public comment period and hearing on the draft permit that's pending that will memorialize the, the RTO two is what they're calling it, into a permit. And then we'll be sharing the sampling data when we get the results back, and any additional actions that come as a result of those sampling results. But tonight, we want to focus on this draft enforcement action. This is the first step in resolving those past violations and authorizing at least the installation to commence on that RTO two, which is, is going to help alleviate some of the odors that y'all are experiencing. So tonight, I'm, you know, staff are here, the AQD staff are here to provide you that information on the enforcement process in general, as sort of a help, helping point about how the process works. This will hopefully give you information that you can then use to ask your questions and make your comments during our excuse me, struggling with a cold here. Our final enforcement action, we want to make sure that it's as good as can be and has your input into that as well. So the important, the action's very important to us in getting the company to start installing, as I mentioned earlier, this additional control equipment. We want it to be done as timely a fashion as possible. So I thank you again for being here. I look forward to hearing your comments, your questions, and I will be listening in for the entire session tonight, so I can hear what your concerns are. So at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Jen, so she can begin the discussion on this draft enforcement action. Thanks, Jen.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Mary Ann. I appreciate that. It, it's helpful to know about all the other things that are going on around these facilities in Michigan, just in general, and kind of knowing that this is a piece of the pie. So I appreciate you kind of laying that out for us. I just want to talk really just briefly again. I know we've had some other people coming on the line. We do have one person calling in, so just be aware of that, Erin, as you move through the presentation. Just to talk really briefly about how it's going to work again tonight. So we're going to do the informational session, so that's going to start off with a little presentation that Erin's going to do, and then we're going to get to the question and answer session. So once we get to that session, that part of the night, you
We lost you just for a second there, Jennifer.
Yep, sorry about that. Yeah, I'm back, sorry. I don't know why that happened. I'm sure you guys can move forward without me. Definitely don't need me babbling on anymore, but I do just want to remind folks that the question and answer session is going to be important. That's where we're going to be able to give feedback on some of your questions. Use the question and answer box, raise your hand at that time, we'll try to get to you. The folks calling in, you're going to use pound two on your phone. After that, or at seven o'clock, whatever, whatever comes first, we're going to start the hearing portion. That's the time again of the night where we're going to be listening to your comments, but we won't really be responding. We're going to talk just really quickly at the end on how you can submit an official comment if you don't want to do it tonight. There's plenty of other ti, there's plenty of time and other ways that you can do that as well. We'll talk a little bit about where you can find other information. I know Mary Ann mentioned the Stellantis website. So we can definitely kind of go over that really quickly. And then how to contact Erin or Bob if you have other questions about what we're here to talk about tonight. So without further ado, Erin, sorry for babbling, please go ahead and start your presentation whenever you're ready.
Awesome, thanks, Jen. As Jen said, my name is Erin Rand. I am one of multiple AQD staff involved in this case. So in this presentation, I'm going to start with a short overview of the Air Quality Division and the enforcement process. And then after that, I will go into the information in more detail about the proposed consent order for Stellantis. So the Air Quality Division, or AQD, regulates sources of air pollutants to protect human health and the environment. AQD has the authority to regulate stationary industrial sources, which we also call regulated facilities. We also have many different roles in regulating air quality. And one of our primary roles is to conduct inspections of these regulated facilities to make sure that they are following the air quality rules and regulations during their operations. So enforcement unfolds under the compliance umbrella, and we do work very closely with the AQD staff that inspect the regulated facilities. So this slide gives an overview of the enforcement process from the beginning when a violation is found. So we have a lot of district inspectors throughout the state. They are the ones who can go out and do a physical inspection of a facility. They'll actually go there, meet with the people at the facility, look around, make sure everything looks good, and they're in compliance. We can also request records for review, get information that way, and we also inspect facilities because of complaints. So during any of these inspections or reviews, if a violation is found, the district inspector will send a violation notice. So this violation notice is a letter that the company is saying that we are officially citing a violation. Then the company has an opportunity to respond and say how they fixed or are going to fix the violations. If for quite a few reasons, we decide that the violation should be escalated to enforcement, the district will then write an enforcement referral to the enforcement unit, and that is where I work. The enforcement unit will then send an enforcement notice to request an initial meeting with the company to start discussing a settlement. So this enforcement notice lets the company know that they will have to resolve the violations through the legal process. Usually, it's through a document called a consent order, which I will describe a bit later. So after we initiate that process, we have discussions with the company about what the plan will be to resolve the violations, and how they're going to come back into or stay in compliance. So once the company and AQD are in agreement on this plan and what is going to be in this consent order, we put the consent order out for a public notice and comment period. That's what's happening right now. This is when people and folks in the community can officially submit comments to us about the proposed consent order. The Air Quality Division is required to put our consent orders out for public notice and comment for a minimum of 30 days. We haven't been doing longer than that in some cases these days. We also plan and hold a public hearing if requested, or as in this case, if it is a high-profile case that a lot of people are interested in, we go ahead and schedule that public hearing. So after the public notice and comment period is over, AQD will address all substantive comments. If there is demand from the public on an item in the consent order that AQD is able to change, then we may go back to the company and propose those changes to the consent order. So if the company agrees on those changes, or if there are not any changes to the consent order, then the company and AQD and the Department of Attorney General will sign the consent order. And at this point, the company is legally required to complete those requirements in the legal document. So enforcement can happen in a few different ways. Our district staff are key. They go throughout the state, inspect facilities, and find those violations that may end up in enforcement. So as I described earlier, violations can be observed during inspections, during records view, or responding to complaints. So that is what happened in this case. We were getting a lot of odor complaints about Stellantis. Bob went out there and inspected the facility and found the violations, which we then took to enforcement. Enforcement can also happen if there are any violations of a facility's stack testing, if they have any monitoring, record keeping, recorded, reporting requirements. These are all things that are in their permit, so there are a lot of permit requirements that companies have to meet. If those are, if we find violations there, those can end up in enforcement. Also, companies have deadlines for different things. If they miss something, they could end up in enforcement as well. So escalated enforcement is the legal process which we use to resolve violations that were cited and sent to enforcement. And we resolve these through what is called an administrative consent order. And I've been referring to, and probably will refer to this as just consent order. So this is an administrative settlement. We are legally required to offer this to a company in enforcement before we consider sending the case or the violations to the Department of Attorney General or to EPA for resolution. So this consent order contains a compliance program, a fine, and also stipulated fines within the document. And 90% of the violations that come to enforcement are resolved through consent orders. So now moving on to discuss the current settlement with Stellantis. Right now, we have sent Stellantis five violation notices for odors. And in these five violation notices, we were able to confirm seven days between August 2021 and October 2022, where Stellantis had violated Rule 901. This says that a company shall not emit air pollutants that cause unreasonable interference with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property. We also sent out one violation notice to Stellantis for improper ducting. So when Bob did his inspection, he found that the emissions from the paint shop were being emitted to the outside air instead of being properly sent through the air pollution control equipment. This slide, I want to summarize the different parts of the proposed consent order. I'm going to go into more detail about these points in the next few presentation slides. So overall, the consent order identifies the alleged violations that we are resolving through the consent order. It has a compliance plan, which is just the steps that the company has to take and the requirements that they have to fulfill under the consent order to maintain compliance and show us that they can stay in compliance. Stellantis will also be paying a total settlement of $274,863. The payment of two, sorry, $62,863 will go to the State of Michigan General Fund. And this is due within 30 days after the consent order is signed. They will also be completing two supplemental environmental projects, which they will spend a minimum of $212,000 on. And then there are also stipulated fines in this consent order for any violations that we may find in the future of this consent order. So the next few slides are more detailed about the proposed compliance plan that is in the consent order. So as of December 19th of last year, Stellantis fixed that duct work that was improperly connected. So the previously uncontrolled emissions are now being routed to the correct concentrator and regenerative thermal oxidizer that they were supposed to be hooked up to. So a regenerative thermal oxidizer, you may also see this abbreviated as RTO, is a type of air pollution control equipment that destroys hazardous air pollutants, volatile organic compounds, and odorous emissions that are created during industrial processes. So they are also required under the consent order to complete testing on this existing RTO and concentrator that the unconnected duct work was supposed to be connected to. This is just to make sure that the emissions are indeed being controlled. Another, the next very important section of the consent order has to do with the nuisance odors. So under the consent order, the company has to comply with Rule 901, meaning, as I stated earlier, they should not emit odors that are causing unreasonable interference with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property. They will also need to comply with the nuisance minimization plan for odors, which is something that was developed for Stellantis to follow to minimize the odors under the consent order. And for any of these points under, sorry, for any of these points in the compliance plan, if we find that Stellantis is noncompliance during the length of the consent order, they will be liable for stipulated fines. So after the enforcement notice went out, Stellantis did an investigation internally, and also had a third party do an engineering analysis. In this, they found additional sources of nuisance odors that were possible nuisance odors that were not related to the ductwork violations. As a solution to mitigating these odors, Stellantis proposed that they add an additional RTO to control these sources of odors. And picture on the left here is just a schematic of an RTO, so you can kind of see what it looks like and how it works. So my next two slides are going to go into what is in the nuisance minimization plan for odors. So this plan is an enforceable plan that lays out what Stellantis has to do to address the odors. So they have a short-term plan and a long-term plan. So the short-term plan, the short-term requirements are that they're using two products that are being added into their stacks to neutralize odors. So the two different products are called Cooperdyne, which is the primary product that they're using. This uses iodine molecules to react with and destroy odor-causing molecules. And then there's a product called Oasis 904, I believe it's also called Malco. This is being used as a backup if Cooperdyne is, for some reason, unavailable, or if additional control is needed. And this product uses natural oils to suppress odor. The nuisance odor plan also then lays out long-term requirements to, you know, deal with these odors. So this includes installing and operating a new RTO. This should control paint shop emissions from those sources that I described before. And by controlling these paint shop emissions, that in turn means that the odor should be controlled as well. They also will have to comply with an odor complaint response procedure. So this means that any time Stellantis receives a complaint, or AQD relays a complaint, an odor complaint to Stellantis, they must investigate this incident and record the conditions around this. What's happening around the incident, like the weather, wind direction, and then also the corrective actions that they took to fix this odor problem. So more about the second RTO. Under the consent order, within 10 days of it being signed, Stellantis must begin construction and installation of this second RTO. Now, they're going to start putting this in, but before, they cannot operate this RTO without an air permit. So they did submit a permit application in May of this year. It is currently still under review by our permits department. So once the permit is issued, Stellantis will need to comply with all of the permit requirements that are, will be written. This includes complying with operation, maintenance, record keeping, testing requirements, and anything else that is in that permit. So another important part of an enforcement settlement is a monetary fine or penalty. So AQD uses EPA's penalty policy to calculate the penalty that is required under the consent order. So we use that policy, and then also the supplemental environmental project policy is also part of this calculation. So just as a side note, you'll probably hear all of us AQD folks refer to supplemental environmental projects as SEPs or ASEP. So I'm going to use this from now on, just because it's less of a mouthful, and will probably help this presentation a little shorter. So the EPA penalty policy lays out what the fine amount should be for each separate violation, and then those amounts are added up. The policy considers many factors in the calculation. So for Stellantis, we consider the ones that are listed here. So that includes the type and number of violations that are being resolved, the length of time that the violations happened for, the fact that Stellantis is in a non-attainment area for ozone, the level of negligence that we considered when the violations happened, and also the quality of their SEPs. So we use all this, we calculate the fine, and then we offer that number to the company in enforcement, in enforcement with us. So after we do that, we talk, and then the final settlement number is decided. So AQD does have to balance things like litigation risk and a company's willingness to resolve the violations when deciding on or agreeing to this final fine amount. And because it's a negotiation, any company in enforcement has the right to present additional factual information about the alleged violations that AQD can take into consideration when ultimately determining the final penalty. Additionally, when a company does a SEP, they do get mitigation credit on the penalty for completing the project. But ultimately, and this is in the SEP policy, they must pay more than if they were to settle without doing a SEP. So in this case, our final agreed-upon penalty was actually $270,203. If Stellantis didn't decide to do any SEPs, all of this money would have gone to the State of Michigan General Fund. But because they agreed to do these SEPs under the consent order, the settlement of $274,863,000 is more than that agreed-upon number, and most of the money goes to the community in the form of these environmental projects. And it's important to note that there is always a minimum required fine that has to go to the general fund. This is that $62,863 dollar amount, and that is determined through these calculations that we do. So on to the supplemental environmental project. So the SEPs are voluntary environmental or public health projects. If a company commits to doing a SEP as part of their settlement, they are legally required to complete it because it is part of the consent order. So Stellantis has proposed to do two SEPs. The first SEP is a building and management system at Southeastern High School. So building management system is an automated energy control platform that allows for remote monitoring and management of building systems. This project is something that was identified by the Detroit Public Schools as a project in need that had not previously been funded. Um this project is something that was identified the by the Detroit Public Schools as a project in need that had not previously been funded. So the building systems that will be controlled um by the stuff that they're installing is um the lighting, mechanical, and water systems, heating, cooling, and also ventilation. Um it will allow um the folks to monitor in real time how well these systems and equipment are performing. It will also control ventilation, temperature, and humidity to make the building more comfortable for any occupants, including students. Um overall, for this project, the higher energy efficiency and lower operating and maintenance costs will result in cost and energy savings for the school that can go back to the school then. The second project um is a tree planting project at Brewer Park. Um Stellantis is partnering with the Greening of Detroit. They will be required to plant over eighty trees in Brewer Park. Um so it is required that the trees will be maintained and wired for two years, and then any trees that do not survive within those two years will be replaced. Um as I stated earlier, Slantis is paying um at least two hundred and twelve thousand dol- two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars for these projects. So this slide is kind of a map of the area around Stellantis. So you can see these um two white buildings, those are the two Stellantis plants. Um the northernmost one is the MAC plant. Um the um so to the left or uh west of the plants um are Brewer Park and Southeastern High School. You can see that both of these um areas are very close to the facility. So this slide shows the timeline of the SEPs. Um so for the Brewer Park project, all of the trees that they're going to plant should be ordered by April thirtieth of next year. And then those those trees should be planted um and that project completed by June thirtieth of next year. Um also on June thirtieth, um the building management system project uh installation should begin, and that project will continue until um it's required to be completed by September thirtieth of next year. Um then between, for the two years between when the tree planting is completed, um that should be June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three, up until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five, um the trees will be monitored, maintained, and watered, and then those non-surviving trees would be replaced. So if you're a community member and are still smelling something um anywhere from now to in the future, um you know, please continue to call us. Uh this enforcement action was a result of community complaints. Um so if there are more odors detected and you call us, and we are able to go out and investigate and do find those odors, it will help us hold Stellantis accountable. And as always, we'll continue to investigate complaints to the best of our ability. Uh so if you're looking for more information about Stellantis or um what's happening there or about this enforcement action, here are a few um links that you can uh go to. Uh the first link is to Eagle's webpage dedicated to Stellantis. So um for anyone on the phone, that is Michigan dot gov slash Eagle, that's E G L E, Stellantis. And the second link is where you can read the proposed consent order, uh summarize of the consent order, and then any other um accompanying information um about this enforcement action. Uh for folks on the phone, that is Michigan dot gov slash Eagle Air Public Notice. And once you click that link, you choose Compliance slash Consent Orders. Uh so that uh is the end of my presentation for the night. So I will now turn it over to Jen for our Q and A session.
So thank you, Erin. If you don't mind just going to the next slide, just so folks can remember you guys' names, and then Bob, if you want to turn your camera on, we do have a few questions in the chat already, so that is good. Um and the first one of these, uh actually, I'm gonna send this first one to you, Erin, because I think this is a good kind of segue to reinforcing some of the conversation that you started. So um the question was, if they're mandated to do the environmental projects, why is it described as voluntary? So can if you can just kind of reiterate that they're voluntary to even start to do them, but then that whole like legal process, like briefly, it would be great.
Sure. So um any company in enforcement, um they don't have to do a SEP. So a company can go through the enforcement process, you know, we can come up with a compliance plan and the fine, and they'll just pay the fine um to the State of Michigan General Fund. Um that's how a lot of cases have been done in the past. It's still how a lot of cases um are settled, you know, in the present. So um we rewrote um the SEP policy a few years ago to try to incentivize um the supplemental environmental projects more. So um you know, we we hear comments that, you know, these uh companies have violations, and the communities, you know, want to see um something back in the community because they've been harmed by the violation. So this is a way in our process and under our rules and regulations and policies, this is the way that we can um move that money back into the community. So um a company can choose voluntarily to um complete these projects under the consent order. Um just but because it is a legal document, a legal settlement, um they essentially had to spend that money that they would have spent going to the State of Michigan General Fund. They've got to spend it somewhere. So um whether that is to the general fund or um back to a project in the community, I guess that's why it's voluntary. Um but like I said, they will be required to um complete the project if it's in the consent order.
Yeah, I think that's the benefit to it. It's, you know, we've I appreciate that you said that we're trying to incentivize companies to do these projects. We know they don't always meet everyone's expectations and but we always feel like it's better to put some money back into the community in some way, shape, or form than to just put all that money back in the general fund when a company isn't meeting expectations. So that was a really good clarification. Um Bob, this question's gonna go to you, and the question is, assuming the consent order is approved as it's proposed right now, so we didn't make any changes based on comments, say, we could approve it tomorrow. Um do you have any idea what the timeline is for installation of the RTO and and what the anticipated startup date is? And I know you don't work for St-
Um yeah, that's a very good ju- uh question, Jen. You kind of cut out.
Yeah, sorry, I cut out there a second, but you knew what I was getting at, I think.
Yeah, yeah. Um yes, I I, you know, don't work for Stellantis, but you know, it's it's a very good question. What, you know, what is the maybe anticipated or estimated timeline we might expect? Um it it can be a lengthy process. Uh you know, I would estimate maybe in late spring or early summer, we might anticipate having RTO two installed and operated. The key, you know, takeaway for me tonight is that once the consent order uh is issued and signed and finalized, they will have ten days to begin construction. And once that that'll allow them to get a head start with the winter months coming uh to help prevent some of those delays from winter construction. Um so we're hopeful they get a good start on that early here and uh can can go um get the shovels on the ground right away. The the key to getting it to operating is to have a permit issued for it, for the Detroit Assembly Complex MAC. And that that's um a key feature here, that we need to get that permit agreed upon and issued so that they can then eventually begin operation. That permit also will go to public comment, like other permits. So it'll be another opportunity for people to review and evaluate uh what we've considered in that permit evaluation. And um yeah, so those are just some rough guidelines of what needs to be done uh for that to get up and operational.
Yeah, and I think once we, if we hear a more specific date, you know, we definitely can share that. I it's one of those things that can be a slippery slope, though. You know, it's like, we anticipate this time, but depending on how things go with construction season and weather and things like that. But I know that uh we're, you know, we want to get them going as soon as possible. And this kind of leads into the next question is, um the person was asking that they heard that there was originally plans for two RTOs. And do it was only one originally installed? Is that true? Did do was there ever a permit that included two RTOs? I don't remember that, but maybe you do.
I don't recall exactly. There may have been a consideration of two. Um you know, a lot of times when it's two, it's just simply two smaller ones. And so the fact that they ended up with one, it was probably a larger unit to accommodate all the airflow.
Okay. Um so this question, I'm gonna give this one to you first, Bob, and we might not have a complete answer for this. Um we have some expectations for sure, and that's kind of what the person is asking. They said, you know, what are the expectations for the new RTO in reducing odors? You know, what do we expect to come out of it? I mean, we're obviously, it sounds like we're kind of pushing this, so do we expect this to um really reduce those odors?
Um yeah, I I think it will definitely offer a a real benefit to the community in terms of reducing emissions, reducing the potential for odors to be out there. Anytime you can control more uh from a plant coming out, it'll re, you know, obviously reduce any intensity, frequency, or duration of potential odors. Um we expect the the oxidizer to be, you know, very similar type operating parameters as in the existing one in the permit. Um but you know, just to be aware that we're still working through those details through the permit process.
Yep, thank you for that. So this is an interesting question. I'm gonna say no, but I do want to read it out loud. The question was, um can Eagle take the tax credit that Stellantis received? So that isn't, you know, something that we're open to in our enforcement negotiations, but it is an interesting question. Um so this question's gonna go to you, Erin. The question is, what kind of community outreach did Stellantis um do to gain community input on the SEP? So the questioner says um Stellantis and Eagle, but it is really Stellantis's obligation to do that outreach to the community. So I just wanted to be a little bit clear on that. Um and did we, did we, is Eagle um recommend or require that Stellantis engage with specific organizations and stakeholders in the neighborhood, those most closely impacted by the violation? So if you can just talk a little bit about um the community engagement that that's Stellantis do. I will caveat that I know, you know, there wasn't a door-to-door conversation that happened. It wasn't, you know, I know we have heard um recently that there is frustration with folks from On Benatall that they weren't necessarily considered or talked to when developing those SEPs. But there was a lot of outreach that was done, so maybe you can just talk a little bit about that for me.
Yeah, sure. Um so I guess as I said before, um SEPs are not a requirement um of any settlement um in enforcement action. They're not required by state or federal law, um and they're voluntary. So um you know, in our SEP policy and um you know, it's encouraged that a company um gets community input as part of SEP development. And we encourage companies to get community input um as part of the SEP development process. So in this case, AQD did share information with Stellantis during the negotiations uh that the community was interested in certain SEPs. Um ultimately, Stellantis contacted uh the Greening of Detroit and Great Lakes Environmental Law Center. They also discussed proposals with the City of Detroit Parks and Recreation and the City of Detroit Public School District. Um so through these discussions, these two SEPs were identified as projects in need. Um and then they they were further developed and submitted to AQD for review and approval. Um so under the SEP policy, these discussions qualify as community input. Um and but you know, under a SEP policy, AQD encourages community input, um but it it's not required to approve a SEP. Um it's something that is considered in how AQD rates the SEP um and determines the penalty mitigation. So um AQD and Eagle cannot choose projects for the company as an escalated enforcement. Um and we can't direct who the company meets with um and where the SEP dollars go. So um it's up to the company to develop the projects. They then submit the proposals that we review, um and if the project meets the SEP policy, then AQD approves the project. Um so that said, um it's really been just recently that AQD has been doing a larger number of SEPs. So you know, we're still working through how to do outreach through um in two communities. So we're definitely taking comments on this SEP process um into consideration as a um like in the way of um how to improve the implementation of a SEP policy and expand on that uh community input process in the future. And you know, we always hope to improve the process every time that a SEP is on the table.
Yep. No, that's a good point, and I'm definitely open to comments and constructive criticism on how we're doing things when it comes to that, too. I mean, we see value in it, but we have to always be getting better at what we're doing. And that includes um trying to implement these and encouraging them. And we want to encourage ones that are positive and good and helpful. So um we definitely love to have comments on that part of our process as well. Um I do have somebody that has their hand up, and they, your hand has been up since the beginning. So I I just want to make sure that you have a question, and I know I had uh, it says that it is Tanika Griggs. So but I think that Tanika shared her login with someone else. So if you maybe used Tanika's login and you have your hand up, I um we're gonna go ahead and unmute you in case you had a question that you wanted to answer out loud. And maybe you just have your hand up on accident. That's totally fine, too. I I do that frequently. So, all right. Well, if you do have your hand up and you want to put your hand down and then back up again, that would be totally fine. Um and Bob, so I'm gonna give this question to you, and I don't know if you have had any, if you have information on this or not, and if you don't, it's completely okay to say that you don't. Um so the question is, do we know how much money Stellantis is putting in to improving the ventilation and to repairing things and doing, putting in the new RTO? I don't know if you know this or not, but I just want to pose the question because someone did answer, ask that.
No, I I do not know the the answer to that question.
Yep. No, that's fine. I wasn't sure if you did, but I wanted to put it out there for sure. Um so this is a good question, and it relates back to the SEP. So Erin, I'm gonna send this one to you first, but Bobby might have some input as well. Uh so the question is, if there's changes made to the SEPs based on community feedback, so tonight or throughout the comment process, if folks have comments on the SEPs and we really feel like there is necessary changes that need to be made, um would that require a delay in the installation of the RTO? So that's kind of part one of that question. So um from my perspective, based on what you said, it doesn't sound like it would necessarily create a delay in the installation. It might, we might have to spend more time reviewing comments to, in order to get to that consent order being finalized, which is fine. We want comments. We want to review them. We want to take our time reviewing them because we want the settlement to be appropriate. Um but I don't know if you have a sense of that that kind of timeframe and and um you know, would that require a delay in the installation of the RTO or a delay in the uh in the uh enforcement action being finalized?
Yeah, yeah, I think I think you put it well. Um like you said, we want comments. Um we want to take them into consideration. Um you know, if the community is suggesting changes that we can make and we um, you know, take them back to the company, um that is going to cause a pushback in um the timeline for us signing that consent order. So um you know, we've we've been working on this. We want to get this um is we we do want to um get this consent order signed so that we can start, if still, and just can start the installation.
Yeah.
And that isn't negating the fact that we still want um, you know, to receive comments and um, you know, consider comments on SEPs. But um just because that uh uh that start date is tied to the um the effective date of the consent order, um that just is gonna cause a shift in that timeline.
Yeah.
And I don't have a sense of how long that would be.
Yeah, it will really depend, and and even if folks, you know, I I think in this question, we're kind of tying these comments to SEP. So we're, you know, in this conversation we're having in this moment, it's like, if if people have concerns or comments on the SEPs, then will that delay things? So really, though, it's to comments on the whole action. So at, you know, all the comments that we get, we want to look at them. We want to assess them. We want to be able to say to ourselves, does this require a change? Should we be changing this? Should we look at this? I mean, that is kind of how the thought process goes once the comment period stop stops. If whether we get one comment or whether we get a hundred comments, we look at them all individually the same way. Um but I think what you're tying in here and what folks are hearing you saying is that, you know, to be very clear, this consent order, once it is issued, will allow the- will allow the company to start installing the RTO. They cannot start installing this RTO without being in violation prior to this legally binding agreement being in place. So those two things do kind of seem like they're a little bit in conflict with each other. You know, you, we've heard, we don't want to speed through this process, but the really important part of this, the, this legally binding agreement is very, very important. I personally think these SEPs are also important, just because I'd like to see the money going back into the community, even if it's not exactly the way we, you know, we all would want. But the second part of that is, and the part that Mary Ann alluded to earlier, and I think Bob has talked about, is the fact that there is still an air permit that is associated with this RTO. There will still be opportunity for comments on that air permit, and that is the part where we really, we want to get the installation started, but we want to start looking at that application and really making sure that all the conditions in that permit are, are well thought out, have been thoroughly reviewed, and all of those kinds of things. So, you know, that's kind of the second part of this. So it, it is complicated, but I think that from the questions that you guys are asking, you're understanding, you know, where we are with all of this. So there's a question in here. So the question was, why did we have the SEPs and the repairs put together in the agreement? So that's a really good question. You know, based on what I was just saying, we have, you know, these two things in this. And again, the SEPs are part of the voluntary process. It is an optional thing that a company can present to us. So it wasn't like we said, you have to or you don't have to. And Erin, please correct me if I'm wrong on this, but from what I'm hearing, it's not like we intentionally did that. It was just how it worked out because the company did want to do some supplemental environmental projects, so they weren't just paying a fine into the general fund. So I don't know if you have anything else that you want to add to that, but it's definitely, you know, that's a question. Why, why were those two tied together if this was going to potentially be a delay?
Yep, I, I think you explained it. It's, it's just because it's all wrapped up in one legal settlement and one legal document. So when that's effective, it's all gonna start moving at the same time.
And we did talk about this a little bit. I think Bob addressed this. How long is the estimate for the RTO to be installed? And, and I think you did talk about, this person might have joined a little bit late, so I don't know if you can just go over that. Again, I know we don't know for sure because we aren't doing the construction, but I know you had a, at least a little bit of insight on that.
Yeah, you know, it, it would be estimated probably somewhere to be around late spring, early summer for installation of a unit, you know.
Okay, just wanted, just want to go through and see if we have any other questions here, and see if we have any hands up. We're just getting close to seven. I want to make sure we're getting to all the questions that you guys have. Okay. All right, not seeing any new questions coming in. Give you guys just another minute, just to make sure that we're getting to the questions that you had about the process here and about where we are with things before we move into the comment period. All right. So Ben, I'm gonna unmute you here. You should be able to ask your question if you want to. You might have to unmute yourself on your screen. There you go. Now we'll be able to hear you. Perfect.
Hi, my name is Ben Feng. I'm a resident of the Benetol Group. And my, my concern is we have been having so many violations for the last thirteen months. If Stellantis still be able to use the paint shop at this time, even with all these violations? And the second question is, we should have a timeline. If, if this repair doesn't work, then we have to do something about the permit. We have to either revoke it or have to do something because we cannot just keep going, keep ongoing retrofit and adding this and adding that. I have, I'm not very happy because the, this project is used Benetol resident as a GNTIC and doing all these retrofits, and whether we can work or not, we don't know. And it's just, it's a really frustrating, I'm very frustrated. And, and I think Eagle is not doing the residents a favor at this time because we have, Eagle is very generous to Stellantis at this point. I don't see any reason why they still be able to operate a paint shop at this time because there are so many violations for the last thirteen months. And we don't want to continue to allow them to emit all these pollutants unless there's that this repair done ASAP. So that's all I have.
No, thank you, Mr. Feng. I appreciate that comment. And I know you probably will make a comment when we get to that section as well, but I do want Bob to talk a little bit about your first question, when you asked, you know, will the company be able to continue to operate? So Bob, if you don't mind just addressing, you know, how we are providing more oversight of the company, the violation notices that we've sent, how, you know, important it is when Benetol residents, especially because they are the closest, feel like they're being impacted, are having odor complaints, you know, how we're responding in that way. And because you're right, Mr. Feng, that the company will be able to continue to operate while they're making these repairs. So I know that is frustration. I hear the frustration in your voice on that. But I do want Bob just to talk about, you know, his role in making sure that the company is doing everything that they can to not be impacting you.
Yeah, it is. It's a very good comment, and I really understand the concern to the neighborhood there. You know, I, I just want everyone to know that we've been out there, you know, almost on every complaint we received and responding and trying to verify the odors. It's not always an objectionable odor, but, you know, we've cited them five times now on several different occasions. And we've also cited them for not conducting the ductwork. So those are the things we're really looking to resolve here today. But also keep in mind that we will continue to respond to odor complaints. We'll continue to go out and investigate. We will continue to conduct inspections at the plant, go out and observe stack tests. And if there are any future or further violations, you know, the company is liable to be cited again, which could result in an additional enforcement actions or stipulated penalties or further ongoing courses of action. So, you know, we're, we're here, we're listening, and, you know, you're always, we respond to complaints, I guess.
Yeah, no, thank you for that, Bob. And I know it is a little after seven, and I told you all we would start the comment period, you know, try to start it right at seven, but I know I made everybody late, so I do see that I have another hand raised. So I want to make sure that this person gets to ask their question. So Michelle James, you should be able to unmute and ask your question if you'd like.
So I want to know, again, what will it take? I, I, I need a direct answer. What will it take? How many? I'll, I'll, I'll just, how many violations does it take for Eagle to stop or shut the production down from Fiat from the violations? How many? I don't want to hear, because y'all, y'all, y'all mow over the questions. Y'all give a few little tidbits, but you don't really answer the questions. So I have to ask it direct. How many? How many violations will it take to stop the production?
So, Ms. James.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, you know, we've been asked this question before, and I really wish that I could tell you a number. I wish that I could tell you a line in the sand that could be crossed. You know, the fact of the matter is, in these cases, when we have companies that have impacted communities, that have been causing violations, that we've had to get to this enforcement action, the, and I know that you're not gonna want to hear this, but I'm gonna just tell you the way it is, is our rules and regulations do not allow us to shut a company down like this. They just don't. And that can sometimes be as frustrating for us as, probably not as frustrating for us, but it can be frustrating for us, and we know it's frustrating for you all when that happens, too. You know, we have to, we have to fit into the confines of what we can do, and these are the things that we can do. And I know that that isn't helpful and it does not make people happy. And this is a frustrating process for you all to be listening to and seeing, seeing how you think things could easily be resolved for you and us knowing that we can't do that for you. So I do really appreciate that you were willing to, you know, hold us to the line and ask that question, and I wish I could give you a number. I wish I could give you something more concrete that could lead you to, yes, we can do that. It's a very, very strenuous process that we have to go to to be able to do that, and it very, very, very rarely ever happens. And that's kind of the way it is, and I know that is not a satisfying answer. So I don't know if you have anything else you want to add to that, and I hope you do, you know, make a comment when we get to the comment period part of the night here. Okay, well, I think we're gonna go ahead and move to the public comment period part of the night. So Erin and Bob, thank you guys for participating and having this conversation. I know it's not an easy one for residents to be part of, and, but I appreciate the questions that you guys asked. They're really good. Mary Ann, I know we're gonna be moving into the comment period, so Erin, I still have to ask you to do slides. I apologize for that. So if you don't mind, just advancing to the next slide for me. And then Bob and Erin, if you want to turn your cameras off, you can go ahead and do that. And I know that we did have some people who had indicated in the beginning of the evening that, or maybe when they registered, that they wanted to make comments. So I wanted to just let folks know, if you, when you registered, if you indicated you wanted to make a comment, we will be reading those names off first. But part of this process in opening up the public hearing portion of the night, so just to remind you, this is the part of the night, we won't be responding to any questions that you might include in your comment. Just want to remind everybody of that. And you can indicate that you would like to make a comment. Once we get past the people who have already indicated they want to make a comment, I'll open it up and I'll just remind you how you can raise your hand if you haven't made a comment yet and you do still want to. But I do have to read, I'm sorry, and I apologize, a quite dry opening statement just to officially open the hearing for you. And I'm gonna get a drink first so that I can actually talk. Okay. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jennifer Dixon, and I'm with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, or Eagle. I will be serving as the hearing officer for this public hearing on a draft administrative consent order for FCA US LLC, also known as Stellantis, and hereafter referred to as Stellantis, located in Detroit, Michigan. Mary Ann Dolleghanti, Division Director of Eagle's Air Quality Division, is the decision maker for this administrative consent order. The Air Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impact on human health and the environment. The law governing those responsibilities is Part 55 of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. We are here tonight to receive your comments on the draft consent order. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the draft consent order for Stellantis an opportunity to provide information the Air Quality Division can use in deciding whether to approve the consent order as written or if there are additional issues to be considered. So please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria we must use in making a decision. For example, concerns related to local zoning, truck traffic, and noise are not within Eagle's authority. In addition, some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the draft consent order. We will be happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is, by law, not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the enforcement action. Please note the proposed terms of the draft consent order are brought to you tonight in the form of a draft agreement. This does not mean a decision has already been made. Instead, it reflects an initial agreement in which Stellantis must pay a monetary penalty complete to supplemental projects, which include the installation of a building management system at Southeastern High School and a tree planting at Brewer Park in coordination with the Greening of Detroit. Stellantis would also agree to pay additional penalties if compliance is not maintained. Everything in the draft consent order remains open for comment and further consideration by the division. We look forward to your comments on those issues. This hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on this draft consent order. The public comment period for the proposed order will end at midnight on November 2, 2022. Additional information can be submitted until then, and it will be considered when Eagle makes a decision. After the close of the public comment period, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality-related comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the consent order will be made by the decision maker. The decision maker may reject the consent order, approve as drafted, or approve with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft consent order, if any, have been changed in the final consent order and the reason for those changes. In all three scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended either the informational session or the public hearing, will be directly notified of the decision. As stated previously, you may submit a comment at any time to an email address or phone, or, I'm sorry, an email address or mailing address that will be provided. You may also type the word "comment" into the question box and submit your comment in writing. If you do not want me to read your comment aloud, please state, "do not read." If you'd like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand, and I will unmute your line so you can speak. We will limit your comment time to three minutes, and I will do my best to address commenters in the order your hands were raised, but please bear with us as the technology does have challenges with doing that. Please recognize department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed proposed consent order and to listen to those comments. Thank you so much for your attention. I will now be getting calling the names of the people who have indicated they would like to make a statement. Okay, so like I said previously, some folks did indicate that they would like to make a comment originally. So what I'm gonna do is I'm going to call the first three names that I have on the list, and if you could just raise your hand, that kind of brings you to the top of our list. And so it'll be a little bit easier to find and unmute you because we do have, we had eighty-one people on earlier, and we have seventy-seven folks still on tonight. So all right, the first three people who've indicated they would like to make a comment are Andrew Gaderas, Rashida Talib, and Shayna McFerrin. So if the three of you could raise your hand, and then we'll get to Andrew first. All right, so Andrew, you should be able to state your comment for the record, and if you could, please say your name and any affiliation that you have. We'd appreciate that as well. And I apologize, but I cannot hear you if you're speaking. Nope, I still, we still can't hear you. So I'm gonna go ahead and just mute you and then unmute you again and just see if that helps. I see that you're unmuted, so, all right, if you're speaking. If you don't mind, I think we'll come back to you. If we can try to go to Rashida Talib, and we'll see if we can get that fixed for you. So I do think I saw that she was on earlier, and she might have had to jump off.
Rashida Talib is not in attendance.
Okay, so she must have jumped off. Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that. Okay, so the next few people that we have on are Robert Shob and Bobby Johnson. So I know I saw Robert on. All right. So, Mr. Shob, if you would like to just state your name for the record, and then if you want to make your comment, go right ahead.
My name is Robert Shob. And I got, I guess a comment, a statement, a couple of things. One thing, I put a couple of questions in the question and answer and, or chat, and then get a response that goes towards the end. But the first thing is, this is more of a question before I get into a statement. You guys were saying that they can't be shut down. In the very beginning of this presentation, you showed us where if they violate the permit or certain things are not met, that's grounds to shut them down right there. That's one thing. The next thing is, is how is this an accelerated enforcement if it's voluntary? Where is your, I mean, you got a statement like you have no authority. I agree, we need to change some principles and policies. I'm not gonna show. I'm not gonna shoot down the S and P because we need this facility fixed. I'm somebody who sits over here and breathes stuff stays in the house the majority of the time because I don't wanna breathe it. I've had you guys tell me, oh, well, it smells a little sweet or whatever. And I say, well, it still burns my eyes or whatever. I'm gonna find out you guys are spraying something to try to kill the scent. I mean, I don't know what's going on, but I know that the people on Benito deserve to be treated better than us by Eagle and Stellantis. I'm not here to bash you guys. I understand that you guys have some policies, procedures that you must follow. But it's, you, it's amazing to me how quick you guys are to tell us what's not possible as opposed to working in a direction of doing what what would be better for the people, what the people need and they need. This to be something that you just told us that it matters not what the public's opinion is or how the people are affected is gonna be decided by decision maker. I'm trying to figure out what was the purpose of this. That's it for me.
Thank you so much, Mr. Show, but we, we do appreciate your comment. Um, so Jim, just to let you know that, um, Andrew was actually, Rashida Tlaib, and she just couldn't unmute her lines, so she's going to go off and come back in. So we'll come back to her. All right, so the next person that I had called was Bobby Johnson, but I don't think that Bobby is on either.
No.
So I'm gonna go ahead and call the next, um, three people. So we have Stephanie Chang, Charles Anderson, and Jeff Gearhart. So if you guys could raise your hands, that would be appreciated.
Stephanie Chang and, uh, Charles Anderson aren't in attendance unless they're coming on under a different name.
Okay, and they might have. I think I saw, um, Stephanie Chang on a little bit earlier. So Jeff Gearhart is Jeff on? Hey, what? I don't know if I saw him on. I don't see him. Okay, all right. So the next three names that we have are Lendrick Bridges, Bob Sisler, and Edith Ford. All right, I think, while, while those guys are raising their hands, I'm gonna try to come back to Rashida and see if she can unmute herself a second. All right, let's try that. Is that working now?
Oh, no.
There we go. Now we can hear you. Apologize for that. I don't know what happened.
So sorry, Andrew, uh, registered me and they just put the link on the, and I don't, I have no idea. This is weird, different Zoom, so I apologize. I think, you know, one of the, uh, things is I would like to resubmit the letter I submitted before about the projects, uh, that are combined now with, uh, you know, fixing and putting them the pollution controls. Just want to resubmit that for the record if we can put that as part of this public hearing. I, if you need me to email it, I can again, but I think the most important question I need to be able to answer to my residents is when, right? And I know you guys are answered, but can someone, can we request within a time period? Is there in law where it says reasonable time period? I think my biggest fear and what I've seen in the past, uh, and Eagle team, you've seen this, where we're doing this for almost a year and trying to get it done right. And so, I mean, is this going to be years? Uh, is it gonna be a year? Is it, you know, you could say spring of twenty twenty-three, but I, I need to tell my residents where this is gonna be fixed. And I, I just don't know what I'm supposed to say to them and not clear why this can't be part of the consent order. Why can't we say this has to be done by this date? You know, I know the process is in place that they have to apply for their permits, all this stuff before, you know, obviously get before the, um, you guys kind of think the RTO, whatever, but I I think that's really critically important for consent order. And, and maybe I've always missed it over the years, but that didn't make any sense to me not to include it. And so my question to you all is, and is you gotta go back and see if you have legal authority to at least put a timeline in. It doesn't make any sense or hold them accountable. It's already been two years of this. My residents have been living with no pollution controls for two years. So I, I'm just putting that out there. It's really critically important. And, you know, separately, the community engagement was not up to par. They shouldn't be getting extra points if everyone on Benito told me they haven't gone to any community engagement meetings regarding those projects. So I'm a little taken aback by the fact that they get little extra points because they go meet with the city and the school district, which is different stakeholders. But the residents actually have to live there, sleep there, you know, be outside walking it out of their homes or whatever. They live there. They, they were not engaged as aggressively or intentionally as, as I hope that, Stellantis did. And, and that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you. And again, sorry about the, uh, mix up with the.
No, it's no problem. Uh, as much, as long as we've been using this technology, it still doesn't always work out for us every day. So I appreciate that. Um, I know, uh, we have Jaclyn Ramsey is reading a statement from Senator Chang. So Jaclyn, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you so that you can talk. So thanks for letting me know that you're representing her.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I think I said yes out loud, but I might have muted myself and then said yes. So yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I'm reading this statement on behalf of Stephanie Chang, uh, State Senator for District One. She was on the public meeting earlier, um, but isn't on the meeting at this time, but hopes to be doing, uh, at some point. Uh, but thank you to Eagle for holding this public hearing. And thank you to all of the residents who have been speaking up and reporting odors and air quality concerns to the Eagle hotline. I want to encourage residents who are participating in this public hearing to continue calling and reporting any issues because your calls are what led to the violation notices, which is now forcing action to happen. Let's remember what led to this hearing today. Stellantis did not follow through on the permit they signed off on. They did not properly install the pollution control equipment. Residents have reported burning eyes, persistent coughing, um, tightening of the chest, difficulty breathing, headaches, and nausea. It is critical, um, that Stellantis construct and install the second RTOs as soon as possible in order to address the problems, um, that brings us here today. The nuisance odors from the paint shops at the Stellantis plant have been a persistent problem for residents living nearby to the point that we have now seen not one, not two, not three, but six violation notices related to the air quality violations from this facility in just thirteen months. I am glad to see that the administrative consent order includes the second RTO as well as the nuisance, nuisance minimi- minimization plan for orders that require testing to demonstrate compliance and other measures. However, I truly hope that the company and all parties involved will work swiftly to address some of the key needs that residents have long been advocating for. A strong home repair program to supplement the existing work being done, as well as a voluntary buyout program. Last November, Congresswoman Tlaib, Councilwoman Johnson, and I wrote a letter to Eagle urging the department to hold the company accountable with the heaviest possible fine with a tritering effort and a robust supplemental environmental project. We advocated for a voluntary relocation effort and a home repair program that would help more residents. We noted that the home repair program should allow for repairs above fifteen thousand, um, above the fifteen thousand cap in the city's program. These were priorities we heard directly from residents. Today, I am urging the company to consider these options because they are still badly needed for the residents living closest to the facility. I hope that Eagle will finalize the administrative consent order as soon as possible so that residents may be able um, to benefit from the new RTO that will help them to be able to breathe cleaner air. But I also want to point out that we can do better to make that, make sure that projects are selected in a way that prioritizes community members who feel the greatest impact. And we need to redesign our process so that any polluting company who violates the standards is not the decider of what community initiatives are funded. In Senate Bill Fifty Four, my bill to create an air quality enforcement mitigation fund, fines paid by polluting companies go into this specific fund where the vast majority would be redirected back to the communities affected by pollution. This take place through a community impact grant program to address air pollution mitigation, air monitoring, improved compliance, health impact assessments, education or training or other initiatives that will help the community most impacted. It is clear today more than ever that this legislation is needed that we can avoid a process where SCPs are negotiated directly with polluting companies. They should pay the fine and the department should decide with a representative, representative advisory committee focused on environmental justice where the money goes. Thank you again for hosting this public hearing, and I encourage Eagle to move quickly to finalize the administrative consent order so that the new RTO can be constructed as soon as possible. While other residents are on this hearing, thank you for your leadership and for your advocacy on behalf of your health and quality of life. Don't ever give up because you deserve the best. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Um, I'm gonna call the name of the next three people. So the, I, the ones that I had called previously are not on, so we're going to go right to Dani Julie. I know I did see that you were on. Um, I don't think Deb Sumner is on, but I'm gonna call her name just in case she's under a different, um, name when she registered in. Brenda Butler and Anthony Adams. So if you guys are on and you would still like to make a comment, please feel free to raise your hand. Well, I did see Danny. I thought I did, but, you know, he might have jumped off. Okay, so those three names.
He's on. He just needs to unmute himself.
Oh, there he is. All right, perfect. All right, thank you, Jim. Dani, whenever you're ready, if you want to just introduce yourself and then go ahead and make your statement.
I don't know if you can hear me or not.
Yep, we can hear you now. That's great. Perfect.
I, I, I wanna know what's the difference between putting in some trees, how it's gonna benefit us and, uh, and the park person putting in some windows. That's my main concern because I know about that park is a, it's a long ways from that plant.
Did you, so remember that this part isn't for, yeah, okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure. Yep, no, that's perfect. Okay, perfect. Did you have anything else that you wanted to add?
I lost it.
Okay, thank you so much for your comment. Really appreciate it. So we had Deb Sumner, Brenda Butler, Anthony Adams. I know you're helping me, Jim, to see if people are on.
No, they're, they're on.
Nope, they weren't on. So, uh, Michelle James, I know that you were on earlier. If she's still on, Michelle, and don't you know?
Yes, I just unmuted her.
Perfect. All right, Michelle, whenever you're ready, if you want to just introduce yourself and then make your comment.
Hi, I'm Michelle Jackson. I am, um, the vice, the president for the Chelmsford Neighborhood Association, and I'm also one of the NAC Neighborhood Advisory Council members. And I am speaking because this particular whole ordeal has been just outrageous from the start. I, um, wanna say that we should look more in how.
Oh, Michelle, I think we might have lost you for a second.
There's no reason.
There we go. So Jim, is she going in and out for you as well, or is that on my end?
Yes, uh.
Okay, I don't wanna miss her comment. So, Michelle, if you don't mind, could you s- kind of start back a little bit more? And I apologize, I think your internet is just going in and out on us. And you can always submit your comment and writing just to make sure that we've gotten the whole thing. I don't wanna miss your comment.
Okay, can you hear, is this better?
Yeah, that's a lot better. Yes, thank you.
Okay, different side of the room, sorry. So, um, we need to look more into when we're giving tax credits for corporations. There's no reason why this corporation has as many tax credits. I think it's like four, I don't even wanna stipulate what it is because it's probably not right. But as many tax credits as they have from the humans and for them to be able to pollute the air and the people, the humans, the human aspect, we're not looking at our humans. We're looking at corporations first. So if the people over there are getting sick, you mean to tell me we don't have any laws in place to protect the people? So then what we're saying is that Eagle is really there for the corporation and not for the residents. That's really what it's looking like. That's a billion-dollar corporation. And then they have the nerves to print in today's newsletter that their air quality is not harmful. And so it actually, for people who reads, is Eagle doing what they're doing exactly what they can do? Or is Eagle just letting them go by with what they can? We have people, eyes are burning, throats are itching. These folks are really getting sick. And for anybody to say that it's not a health hazard, for anybody to say that it's not affecting them in such a way that they can still be polluted, for anybody to allow the corporation to continue to put stuff in the air that will make folks sick is really a disgrace to the human race. And so, you know, I don't know how people sleep, whoever made the rules. I'm not talking about you guys because you're just following, um, what your jobs are and what regulations are. But who's ever making these rules, they, they need to be changed. They would, they need to be looked at. And we need to know how to get them changed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jackson, for your comment. We do appreciate you taking the time to do that. I have a couple other names on the list right now. Rhonda Thues, which I, I do not think that she's on. Um, and then Eden Bloom. So if you would like to, raise your hand, Eden, there you go. You're right at the top. So, um, I don't think Rhonda's on. So Eden, if you'd like to go ahead and make, introduce yourself and make your comment whenever you're ready. You might have to unmute yourself. Okay, sorry, Eden, if you're speaking, we can't hear you yet. It doesn't look like you've unmuted. And we can come back to you too here. So I'm just gonna try to, oh, just one more time. And then we'll try to come back to you because it doesn't look like you're able to unmute right now. Um, the next person that I had that has their hand raised is Jonathan Scott. Jonathan, would you like to make a comment? If you can just introduce yourself and you should be able to unmute and speak whenever you're ready.
Oh, um, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, um, I, I must be on, um, as, um, Jonathan Scott. I didn't know.
Oh, yeah, okay.
This is Rhonda Theis.
Oh, Rhonda, thank you. Thank you for, yeah, I know sometimes if you share links with people, it does come up. Like for a little while, we had like five Tanika Griggs on. And I know she isn't a clone of herself. So if you want to just go ahead and introduce yourself and make your comment, that would be great.
Okay, uh, my name is Rhonda Theis. And, um, I am a, a resident of East Canfield Village, which is the, um, neighborhood that, um, this Stellantis, um, facility is in. Um, I live on Montclair, which is, uh, four blocks away from Benito. Um, so my comment is that, um, that this is environmental racism against black people, uh, pure and simple. Um, the fact that Stellantis, um, never, um, installed the pollution control equipment that they, um, got the initial, um, permit for is egregious. And what makes it even more egregious is the fact that they installed it in the Warren Plant, but did not in the, um, in the Detroit plant that is situated in, um, a neighborhood full of, um, people. Um, and this, um, Eagle has to prioritize, um, getting the, getting, um, the, um, the RTO and this, um, pollution control equipment installed. We have been breathing this, um, this toxic air for over, for, um, two years. We can, we, we cannot wait another six months, eight months. Uh, we can't. Um, and the, the requirement to have them mitigate this, um, needs to be immediate and it should not be tied to anything else. It should be a priority, um, in and of itself. Because the health of the residents of this community, um, are at stake. Um, and so, but we have to call it exactly what it is, which is, um, environmental racism.
Did you have anything else to add to your comment, Rhonda? I don't wanna cut you off.
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Um, so I did have a note from Renard Monzus- Monzunski. I probably said that wrong. Um, I don't know if you still would like to make a comment or not, but I can get you unmuted and you should be able to make your comment whenever you are ready. There you go. Yep, we should be able to hear you now. If you want to just introduce yourself and, uh, then go ahead with your comment.
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I only heard part of what you said. Um, could you repeat yourself?
No, that's totally fine. No, I was just saying you're unmuted. So whenever you want to just, um, state your name for the record and make your comment, we're ready to hear you.
Okay, my name is Renard Mischuski, R E N A R D. Last name is spelled M O N C Z U N S K I. Last name is spelled M O N C Z U N S K I. President of the City of Detroit, and I support efforts. Here's the thing, Eagle has to be there for the residents of the people of, on Benetton Street in the affected areas that are experiencing this pollution, the fumes and the sickness that is coming from that. And really, any sort of mitigation that is not directly impacting residents is really just corporate mitigation, and we should be there for the people. That's your charge for that. And the thing is, if there's some policy hindrances, that needs to be changed and recommended. But Eagle should be prioritizing repairs for residents, directly listening to those residents as well and their needs instead of running interference for a corporation. And the other thing is fund home repairs or funding for voluntary relocation of these residents as well too, because this is a quality of life issue. The thing is someone has to wake up, cook, bathe, breathe the stuff. And, and you know, like do their day to day errands, walk outside, go to the car or have to catch public transportation, these fumes in. And any sort of efforts that do not help residents really is just for show. So making a recommendation for home repairs that involve air filters and window reinstallments and other sort of insulation and things that is going to prevent these fumes from getting out there and more responsibility for Stellantis. Making sure that they're actually using political, like pollution technology that scrubs the stuff out of the air and doesn't pollute and doesn't add more pollutants and things of that sort. If that can be done in Warren, that should be done in the city of Detroit. And it's blatant environmental racism and the fact that Detroit is, can be considered an area to dump, dump in. But in other areas, there have to, you know, there's more protections for those residents. We all live in the same state of Michigan. We should have the same protections. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for your comment. So at this time, I don't have anybody who has already indicated that they would like to make a comment. So if anybody else would like to raise their hand, right now would be the time. So I do have someone who's raised their hand. I just see your initials, D E. So D as in dog, E as in Edward. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. And if you would like to just introduce yourself and make a comment for the record, that would be wonderful.
Yes, hi, can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Hi, thanks. And, and this is Eden Bloom. I'm on another machine. I had to, had to call in on another machine. So you can take my name off the other list, but.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I wanted to, to thank Eagle for, again, the, the opportunity to, to try to get my head around this and learn more about the process and respond to the injustice. And, and, and I'd like to make demands that Eagle really change course. The impact of, the impact area of the Stellantis Detroit Assembly Complex is defined clearly as a, as a frontline or an environmental justice community. And considering the expressed intention of Eagle to do better for folks who are directly impacted like this, I feel that this process that we are engaged in now is just completely disrespectful and, and fails to, to meet that call to stand up for environmental justice communities. Y'all, I'm also a resident in the impact area. I want to share that. I, I just, I'm always amazed at the amount of faith you all put in Stellantis. Stellantis did the right thing. You hear them saying that they talked to community and they, they talked to these people and they talked to these people. Did you ever vet any of that information? Did you ever check that they're doing what they're saying they're supposed to do? Even with the, the monitoring and everything else, the, the weight is put on Stellantis to tell you if they've done something wrong. You take it for granted that Stellantis has spoken with community members and you don't check with the, with the folks that they say they've talked to to find out if that's the case. So I, I just really want to, to see a shift here. I've asked for paradigm shifts for the past three years from Eagle. I've said the same things. But we really need to put the focus away from catering to the, the company and to focusing on the impacted residents. Folks have mentioned it. I'll mention it again. People complain of overwhelming fumes, the eye, throat, and lung irritation, the headaches and nausea. These are real things that real people are complaining of. Because the state of Michigan doesn't have the proper equipment or the time or the money or whatever to do the testing that needs to be made to determine the health impacts. Folks are still having this, even with the Febreeze they're spraying in the stack to try to cover it up. Okay, so let's, let's be real about the human impact here. And let's try to shift, paradigm shift away from servicing companies to servicing the people that you all are supposed to be trying to protect. What else do I have here? The SEP, obviously, you all did not engage with the community. I find the rating system, the endorsement by Eagle of these SEP projects to be very not fact based because you all didn't check with us, the folks who live here. You seem to, to speak to only representatives. And the other piece I'd really like to, to lift up is that you do have a list of people to contact. That's the folks who've complained to your hotline, who have actually been impacted to the point of needing to make a phone call to you. Why don't you check in with them to see if these SEPs are up to snuff and meet the community needs? They're the folks who have taken the time, you know, when they're loading their kids in the car or whatever's happening, to make a phone call and call you out there. You've got their number. They complain to you. You've got their information. Reach out to them. Find out what they need and what's going to address their concerns and make this right for them. This is a violation. This is violence against a community. And I really would like to see a massive shift to look at what's happening on the ground here rather than just take things for granted for a company that is using our own tax resources to pollute us. And, yeah.
Just letting you know, Eden, you've got about 30 more seconds if you wanted to wrap it up.
Uh, yeah, so prioritize the repairs. It's, it's ludicrous to me that, that, that this should be tied to a PR campaign, putting trees and fixing the school for Stellantis. I mean, those are great things. We love trees and we want the school to be fixed up, but the repairs are the important part here. And, you know, and also residents, again, listen to the people. We were all here three years ago. I was, I was talking to you all and expressing these same concerns when you were rolling this project out about these health issues. And even with those concerns, Stellantis did not put the stuff in right and say what they were going to do. So please, hold these people accountable. Please step up for us here on the ground. Step up for the folks on Benetton and address the injustice. Prioritize these things. Do something different. Do something radical and fix it. This is environmental justice community. You need to do better. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much for your comment. All right. If there's anyone else who'd like to make a comment on this tonight, we, we definitely have time for that. Just go ahead and raise your hand. I don't see that I have anybody calling in right now. But if anybody else would like to make a comment on the record, we, I'll give you a couple of minutes to decide if you want to do that. Okay, Marianne, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Are you okay if I close the hearing? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and just read the closing statement. And then we do have just a couple other things to go over tonight. If you didn't make a comment this evening, there still are ways to let us know what you think about what's going on. So the closing statement is just thank you for your comments and cooperation tonight. We appreciate your interest in the draft consent order for Stellantis, as well as the time you took to be here. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period ends on November 2, 2022. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the comment period and anyone who attended this public meeting will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed consent order. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again. All right. So Erin, you're still sharing your screen. So if you don't mind going to the next slide for me, I would appreciate that. So on the screen right now is just the other ways that you can submit a comment. So I know Congresswoman Tleeb said that she had some other things that she wanted to submit. She's already submitted some of, some to us in email. So that's a perfectly acceptable way to do that. You can send us written comments. That address is just eagleaqd and the P O box is 30260 in Lansing, Michigan, and it's 48909. And then you can just send any comments that you might have up until midnight on the second to Erin. And her email address is moran@michigan.gov. Just to kind of let you know, we'll do, we'll do a little bit of a follow up email once the recording is ready and transcribed to all of you, and we will share the presentation as well. Yep, thank you, Jim, for putting that in the chat. So if people need to grab that from the chat, they can. It's just Erin's email address. And then Erin, if you could go to the next slide for me. And this is just the contact information for Erin again. If you do have complaints or you have questions about inspections, you can give Bob a call or email him directly. Otherwise, one of the better ways to get ahold of us quickly is just to call our pollution emergency number, which is 800-292-4706. We also have an online complaint form. I know this community doesn't necessarily use that, but that is another way for folks to be able to get ahold of us quickly if they do have concerns or complaints. On the next slide, please. All right. I just want to thank everyone again for joining us during the meeting tonight. I know, as Marianne stated earlier, there's definitely other things folks would probably rather be doing. And your participation in this is very valuable to us. So be looking for some follow up information from us. And again, please submit any other comments, questions, concerns that you might have up until the second on the enforcement action. So with that being said, I hope that you have a good rest of your evening, and we look forward to talking to you again soon.